Hey everybody, Josh Sheridan here with the Barely Legal Podcast. Today on the show, we have Guido Maniscalco, local politician, political figure, political giant. We're lucky enough to have him come in today and talk with us about his history and what he's doing here in Tampa and the future of our good city looks like today. How are you doing, Guido?
Great, how are you?
Good, thank you for coming in. This is the earliest podcast I've ever done, so you hold that record. How are you doing?
Not too bad. I'm enjoying this, I think, last day of the cold weather before we get back into the 80 degree, you know, classic Tampa.
I know. Yesterday, I started off with a sweater and by the end of the day, I was sweating in a t-shirt.
Yeah, me too, so you never know.
You get the full spectrum. Are you from Tampa originally?
Yep, born and raised.
And where'd you go to school?
I went to, as a kid, Christa King.
Oh really? That's where my daughter goes.
Okay, so I was there for a couple of years, then transferred to St. John's Greek Orthodox. So people know the Greek festival there on Swan Avenue.
Right.
Started at Jesuit High School, but then transferred to Tampa Catholic, graduated there, and then did the the rounds. So a year at University of Tampa, a couple of years at HCC, and then finally graduated from USF.
Wow, man, you've...
Have done it, done it all locally.
You must be hit up big time for contributions from alumni. You've got about 10 different schools there.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Well, that's great, though. You have a breadth of experience.
Oh yeah.
And so, right out of college, did you get into politics?
No, no. I took the LSAT. I was applying to go to law school. My best friend and I, at the time, we did everything together. He even went up to Michigan to Thomas Cooley before they opened the campus down here. He found, he said, "I got the perfect apartment, the perfect place, the perfect..." You know, we had this whole thing planned where we would encourage each other to, you know, to get through law school. He's very, he's a genius. And I said, "What better roommate to have that will make sure, like, we have to study, we have to..." You know? And he got married, had kids, his life took a detour, and he's a teacher now.
Oh wow.
And I just didn't want to go to law school at the time because I wanted to always get involved in politics. And so, out of college, while doing the LSAT stuff, I was working in the mall at one of the retail stores at International Plaza. And I ran for office in 2011, the first time.
What store were you working at?
I was at Mont Blanc, the pen store.
The Pen Place, okay.
So, yeah, someone had quit. I had applied. The timing was just right. I graduated USF a week after, so that was interesting. And actually, the day I graduated, I had an English degree. One school called and asked if I'd be interested in teaching English for a little bit, which I should have because I think, you know, I really don't...
That would've been a great experience, yeah.
I don't have many regrets in life. I mean, I'm still young and whatnot. But, you know, I should've taught for a year. I think it's extremely rewarding, you know, when you can mold and teach, you know, young students and motivate them and whatnot. And teacher friends that I have, you see the impact that teachers make on the lives, you know, of their students, whether it's middle school or high school. It's a big deal. And I think we don't appreciate teachers enough. And so, if I could, you know, if I could go back, I'd teach for a year and, you know, and get that experience.
Both my parents were teachers, so I grew up in that household and I saw the, you know, there's the principled side of it, like you're talking about, you know, the good of it, but then there's the dark side of it. I got to see a lot of Thursday afternoon happy hours with the teachers and kind of got an inside view into, you know...
Well, I mean, I hear stories now and it's, you know, that same best friend that wanted to go to law school, he's a teacher at like a grade F, grade D school, and he tells me the parent-teacher conferences. You never know what to expect.
Oh, it's the worst part, yeah.
And, you know, how the administration there encourages him, you know, give him a high five as the students walk into class. Encourage him, you know, tell him to do a great job, you know, things that I wouldn't expect. But he says, you know, "They go to an empty house," or, you know, "It's a single parent home where the, you know, they're working two and three jobs and whatnot." And, you know, that time that they spend in school, you know, you want to be a mentor to them. You want to encourage them as much as you can.
Well, I mean, as far as you wanting to make a change in the type of work that you do, I mean, as far as teachers go, especially in schools like that, what better avenue to really impact someone's life, you know?
Sure, sure.
And those kids, you know, there's really could change the path that they're on, so that's awesome. Now, did you have people in politics in your family?
No, nobody.
So you're the first one?
You know, I'm a first-generation American. My mom came from Cuba as a little girl, at three years old. Went through Miami and then came to Tampa in the early 60s with my grandmother. My grandfather joined them. He had served in World War II. My father came from Sicily to Tampa in 1981. His cousins had moved here a few years prior, so he came to be with them and met my mom, and the rest is history. But nobody, you know, my grandfather was in the jewelry business. My family's been, is in the jewelry business. You know, my dad's two sisters. One is an OBGYN in Sicily. His other sister is a teacher, but teaches, I don't know, she teaches like law courses, you know? She's different schools and different things.
Right.
But, and my father became a jeweler. He had studied accounting, studied accounting.
Wow, that's kind of a big jump.
Accounting and got into jewelry, so that's what he does now. But no, I don't think anybody's had ever political ambitions. We weren't politically involved because of my, you know, my grandfather years ago. They knew a lot of people. A lot of people have since passed away. But I will tell you that as a teenager, you know, I was always with my grandmother. And sometimes the phone would ring and...
Just the Cuban grandmother or the Italian grandmother?
Cuban grandmother. And the phone would ring and I'd answer, and it would be a lady on the other end named Evelyn Greco.
Oh, okay.
And she would call from my grandmother. She had known her from when she worked in the bank. My grandmother would see her, you know, years ago, back in the 70s, I think. And she's the mother of Mayor Dick Greco.
Yeah.
So there was always that. There were people like Judge EJ Salsinas, who was a commonly seen figure, you know, throughout my life. Who else? Sandy Friedman, you know, here and there, my grandmother would support her campaigns back in the 90s, late 80s and whatnot. Governor Bob Martinez was someone that my family knew back in the 80s and 90s. So they were, they were there. And how my father raised me was, you know, you always show respect. And it would be, they were very good friends with this judge, Vince Giglio, was his name, who passed away about 10 years ago, so a little over 10 years. And he married my parents in this legal thing, you know, in the backyard of my grandfather's house. We traveled to Italy together, you know, always good friends. But my father always made sure to never not address him as judge, whether he was retired or not, it was judge. We were friends with a two-star general named Frank Rigano, who's 90 years old now, and it was always the general.
Related to the attorneys?
No, 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 no. But, you know, it was always the general, make sure the general. And I remember, I finally met Dick Greco in Ebor City in Centennial Park when I was maybe 12 or 13 years old. And I had never really met, you know, I was a kid. I never met anybody famous and, you know, important other than, "Oh, this is so-and-so, so, you know, the family friend, or your father's friend, or your grandfather's friend." And it was, "You want to meet the mayor, the mayor?" And I remember Greco was in a black overcoat. And I met this guy because I'm, you know, I'm 13 years old, 12 years old.
He's a trip, too. I just met him recently for the first time.
But, you know, the mayor, the mayor, such a big deal. And, you know, this like first person of, you know, a famous person, you know, he's the mayor of the town. And I met him and I would hear about his charisma, this natural charisma that he had. And I asked my mother, again, a 13-year-old kid, I go, "What's the big deal?" And she says, "When he talks to you, he makes you feel like you're the only person in the room." And he invades your, he gets in your personal space and, you know, he makes you feel like that. You're the most, like, you're his best friend. And that's how you leave a conversation when you first meet him, like, you know, "I'm his new best friend."
100% true, yeah.
The way he talks to you, the way he...
He grabs your arm and he makes you feel his muscle and he tells you jokes.
But you could tell him, you know, "I had a turkey sandwich for lunch." And to him, it would be, you know, "That's the greatest thing I've heard all day."
Yeah.
You know, like, it was so important. So, and she would tell me, as a little girl, my mom went to Villa Madonna over on Columbus. And I don't know if you visited the school back in the late 60s when he was first mayor, but it was, you know, you know, good-looking, young mayor, young family, beautiful wife, all this stuff. You know, it was like this glamorous couple. And anyways, I've gotten to know him over the years and I've understood, you know, what people say, that natural charisma. Because you talk to him and you're the most important thing there, that there could be a thousand people in the place, but he talks to you and he's razor-focused. So people like him, people like Mayor Nick Nusio, whom I never met, he died when I was a kid, but, you know, he was the first Latin mayor, you know, he's old-school, he cared about the people, he was always in the community. People like that influenced me. And I said, "I want to be like that," you know? And growing up, remember, I, you know, I'm 35, so I got the, I got to see, you know, the important guys in the community were those World War II folks. So it would be, you know, "You got to go talk to Charlie Miranda." He's not of the World War II generation, but he had been there for so many years. And he's still there. Now I serve with him in city council. People like Tony Garcia, Senior, Marcelo Maceda, you know, Judge EJ Salsinas, people like Mayor Dick Greco, all the people that he had around him, people like Fernando Noriega, who was always good friends with my grandmother, Monsignor Higgins at St. Lawrence.
Sure, yeah.
And going to Jesuit is another thing. I started, when I was there, I was there in the late 90s and all the original priests were there from when the school started. Father Cannelli, Father Hartnett. They've all passed away, but I was given the good fortune of, you know, being alive and trying to under, you know, and building those friendships with these important figures that many whom have passed away.
Right.
But were so significant and so important to this community. So all those things influenced me. And I said, you know, "They may not be rich, they may not be millionaires, but it's not about money. It's about, you know, the respect that they have in the community and their sincere passion, you know, for Tampa." So all those things over the years influenced me to want to be involved, you know?
Do you have siblings at all?
I have a younger sister.
How much younger?
Two years younger.
Okay, what'd she do?
She started off, graduated high school, went to work for MAC Cosmetics, makeup artist for, she was there for 10 years. And now she freelances, so she'll do weddings and events. And she's married out in Valrico
Okay.
to my brother-in-law, who is a wonderful person. I can't say anything, there's nothing negative to say. My sister's extremely happy. They have a great life together, and two little girls, so I have two nieces.
Oh, that's awesome.
And, but he's the complete opposite, you know? I mean, you go to the house and it's NASCAR and country music.
Yeah.
And he drives a pickup truck.
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with that. My sister's happy and he's a great person. But you figure, like, we're so, you know, traditional Italian, traditional Cuban, Spanish, you know, like yesterday was Three Kings Day.
Yeah.
You know, it's important to us.
Right.
It's important to have noche buena, when you have, you know, the pork and the black beans and rice and the yuca and all that stuff.
When you get to Brandon and Plant City and Valrico, those areas, it's kind of a cross-section of those two things. My wife swears that she's related to you somehow. Her maiden name is Basiglio.
No, I know the whole family.
Do you?
I know the whole family. Try, you know, I know cousins, I know, you know, it's not a common name, but, you know, I know, I went to high school with Melissa, I guess would be her first cousin, because I know there's several brothers and stuff.
Melissa is, she's a pharmacist now, and her dad is Norman Senior, who's a veterinarian out there. But out there in that area, Brandon, Plant City, Valrico, you have kind of the southern mixed with the Italian, you know? So you get a lot of that kind of cross-section out that way.
You think, "Oh, it's all Tampa." No, it's, you know, where do you live? Town and country. Where do you live? Brandon? Where do you live? Wesley Chapel? You know, the area has grown, so people have spread out. But you meet folks from all over and, "Oh, my grandmother was born in Ebor City," you know? Or it's like, "Or they worked in the cigar factory." And you're like, "What are you doing out here?" He goes, "It is what it is. A family friend of ours, Joe Calteggeroni, is going to be 94 next month." He said, you know, "After World War II, you know, we come back to the old neighborhoods." He lived in Seminole Heights. He says he was the first Italian family to live in Seminole Heights. So he was born in '26, his brother was born, I think, in '23. So at the time, you know, Seminole Heights was young. Now it's, you know, a historic neighborhood. But he says, you know, "After World War II, we left," you know? He goes, "I got married, I got an apartment on Davis Islands." You know, he lives out, he's lived out in Lutes for years now. And he goes, "But we come back to the old neighborhoods." This is, you know, before this renaissance that we experienced. You know, you come back in the 80s and the 90s and you go to Ebor City and the Heights and whatnot, you go, "What happened?" You know, I mean, everything's so different. Not because the interstate came through and whatnot. He goes, "But, you know, we left after the war and in the 1950s and how so much changed. We moved out to, oh, we want to, you know, we get a bigger house and more land out in Brandon and Lutes and whatever." So people spread out, now they come back to the neighborhood. And now there's a new generation of folks that have invested for the last several decades in these neighborhoods, and they've come back in such a way that, I mean, like, we're in Tampa Heights now. It's incredible what's going on in this neighborhood. It's incredible what's going on in West Tampa and Seminole Heights. Sulfur Springs is there historically significant, but I think it's lying dormant. It's like it's another untouched historic area. But, you know, this new generation of people, maybe it's millennials, you know? We sometimes get a bad rap, but when I speak to millennials and generations younger, I tell them, "We're the generation that's going to save the world." And what does that mean? We discuss things like climate change. We discuss things like, you know, trying to pull people out of poverty, talking about a living wage, you know, helping the homeless and the houseless, reinvesting in these older neighborhoods as they have, you know? Look at that historic bungalow. 20 years ago, it was an old house.
Right.
You know, but there are people that have been, you know, in the front lines 30 years ago, living in these neighborhoods, that live there now and whatnot. But, you know, our generation is, you know, invest in the past, preserve the history, you know, keep telling that story, moving it forward for the next generation. So I give our generation a lot of credit, you know? When we get put down, it's, you know, we've, we're appreciating things like our grandparents appreciate it, you know? We may not be that war, World War II, Depression generation, but I graduated USF in '07. In December of '07, and I remember several friends of mine whom all left that came down here because it's, Tampa doesn't have what we need. But you'd apply for a job and you'd say, "I have this degree. I have these student loans. I've been studying. I've been, you know, had my masters, whatnot." And you would hear, "There's no jobs," you know, the economy was starting to go into that downturn. And it would be, you know, "Go work in a restaurant and wait tables, go work in the mall," I mean, like I did.
Right.
Make it $9 an hour, which I'm grateful for. I mean, there's...
It sharpens your blade. I mean, it teaches you.
I like, I enjoy, I like to work. I like to stay busy. I'm up at 5:00, 5:30 every day. I go to bed at a fairly reasonable hour. I love the morning. I like to be productive. I like to get things going. But, you know, my grandparents' generation experienced the Depression. My generation experienced the Great Recession.
Right.
And I'm not blaming anyone, I'm not, you know, for whatever happened with the housing market and, you know, the global economy in general. But, you know, we've learned to, we've understood struggle to a certain degree. We've worked hard. You know, we understand sacrifice, you know, I mean, as my generation, young people. And we know, you know, we don't get it handed to us. It's not easy because, you know, we graduated and it was, there's no jobs. You know, there's no money. The banks aren't lending. You want to buy a house? You might have good credit, but put so much money down.
Right.
Prove to us that you don't need the money and we'll lend it to you.
Yeah.
But, you know, you come out of college, I didn't have money, you know? So we go to work and whatnot. But, you know, I'm the youngest member of the city council.
Let's talk about that. So you were working at International Mall. So how did you even know to run? How did you even know how to run? I mean, like, tell me about that process.
I, you know, I was on Facebook, and at the time, you had to be a college student. You know, this is '05 when I got on Facebook. And I think by '07, '08, I said, you know, "I want to run for office." You know, everyone dreams, you know, "Oh, what if I could be President of the United States?" Whatever. But I wanted to start small, and I like being, you know, in the municipal government, you know, in that arena because, you know, the president can do whatever, the governor can sign whatever. Your member of Congress, your congressman or woman can do whatever. But if your trash doesn't get picked up, your recycling is missed, you have potholes, you have flooding in your street, those are things that affect you locally and something that the city or the county, you know, again, locally, would help you with, you know? So whatever can happen on the larger scale, but what happens locally, you know, can affect you the most.
Well, funny, so funny story about that is, 2016, I was in, well, I'm still in therapy, but 2016, I was in therapy and I was pretty focused on the election. I was listening to hours and hours of podcasts. I was watching every news channel I could and I was talking to my therapist. And she was like, "How much do you really think this election's going to affect you on a personal level?" And it was a hard question to answer because at the time, it seemed like an existential crisis to me. But the point she was making was very true, you know, like, "You need to be able to get to work. You need to get your trash picked up. You need to have, you know, all these, these are things that are much more likely to impact your day-to-day than whatever's happening on the national level." So you're 100% right. And, you know, that's something I have to remind myself of every day when I'm getting too caught up in national affairs.
I look at, you know, how the office of the president and whose president affects us. So I always look at history and try to study history. For example, had John F. Kennedy not been assassinated, would American involvement in Vietnam had escalated, as it did? You know, we had Lyndon Johnson come in and, you know, history will show you that. Would there have ever been a presidency of Nixon, you know, had Kennedy survived? Had Al Gore won the 2000 election, would Barack Obama as President of the United States even have existed? Because I think whomever won that election, 9/11 was going to happen, the economy was going to hurt, and by the time the '08 elections would have, you know, come around.
The other party would have.
It would've been, you know, "All the Democrats have ruined everything. You got to get a Republican in there." And we could've had a President McCain or President Romney or whatever. And you wouldn't have had that historical significance of having Barack Obama.
Sure.
And in that, you know, would you have had a Hillary Clinton? Would you have had, you know, would we have a Trump now? So it's interesting to see, you know, the death of a president in 1963, how the elections went because I think Florida was the deciding factor with the Electoral College, or however it was, I don't remember, in 2000. How things would be different historically and how we look at, everything happens for a reason and everything is, it goes back to fate and it's, you know, "Our destiny is already written, blah, 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 blah." You don't know. So anyways, that's getting beyond, you know, on the national level. But at the local level, all these things that I've mentioned, you know, will affect you. Whoever gets elected mayor, because there's, the mayor has so much authority. We have a strong mayor form of government. But at the same time, we have seven city council members that can override a veto, should the mayor veto something, with five out of the seven votes, which we call a supermajority. We haven't had to use that, but for example, people will say, you know, "What is city council?" I remember one gentleman told me back in 2010, "You're just a glorified zoning board." And I said, "You could look at it like that, or you could look at it as, 'We approve the budget that the mayor proposes.'" You know, if there's a budget that we don't agree with, I mean, we can fight that. It's not just, "I'm going to vote against it." If enough of your colleagues choose to vote against that budget, you know, now you're putting, you know, the city in a different set of circumstances. We had a contentious budget a couple of years ago because it was to raise the millage rate for the first time since the 1980s. And the reason was so many factors. One of them was there was an additional homestead exemption that was on the ballot that people assumed would pass and it did not pass. That would've been a multimillion-dollar hit to the city's coffers, to our budget. Thankfully, it did not pass. But in that, the all-for-transportation sales tax passed with an overwhelming majority. The school sales tax passed, you know, with an overwhelming majority. So it was a perfect storm of, you know, it was to our benefit. That homestead exemption would've been very detrimental to us. But then again, it would've affected us as council to make budget decisions, the mayor as well, what to cut, what not to include, what projects to delay, you know, whether it's an investment in a park, fixing docks in a park, you know, restoring a park, fixing our roads, whatever it is. So, you know, all that has a major effect. But I was first elected in 2011.
So I want to skip to, over that part, because that's interesting to me. You were saying you were on Facebook. You had just started on Facebook. Was it a, did you race against somebody? Did you...
So I was on Facebook and I figured, you know, I could have a great social media platform and, you know, get young people out to vote. Then it was opened up to everybody, you know, like parents and grandparents. Everybody's on Facebook now. I could build enough of a social media presence that I may not have to raise all the money to do direct mail. I'm going to go the way of the future, the digital way, the way of the social media, the way of smartphones and apps and whatnot. So I had one opponent, and I was 25, nobody knew me. I was showing up, I would freeze when I would speak.
You've got an amazing name.
Well, I mean, even one gentleman who will remain unnamed, he goes, "You might want to stop using the name Guido and start showing your face, because that's a tough name." And I looked at him and I said, "Barack Hussein Obama, President of the United States." Now tell me that might, you know, and that, he never said anything. Again, I go, "It doesn't matter." I mean, we're a paella, we're a melting pot. Every, you know, people from all different walks of life come to the United States and you can, doesn't matter who you are, you know? If you have the right message and you get enough votes, of course, you know, you win. So I was in a race with another individual who I was not going to beat, you know, the odds were always against me. And that person dropped out of the race.
Really?
And for a week, it was an odd feeling of, "Wow, I can really pull this off as a 25-year-old nobody." And then like four other people got in the race. And so, that first campaign in 2011, I came in fifth place out of fifth place. And I raised $13,000 or so, when I was supposed to raise $150,000. And that was it. So instead of feeling discouraged, because I remember the night that I lost, people kept asking me, "Are you okay? Are you okay?" And I was fine. I said, "I'm going to learn from my mistakes. I'm going to learn from all the advice that I received in this campaign. And I'm going to get as involved as I can in causes that I care about." So I got involved with the Ebor City Lions. I became president of my neighborhood association. I was appointed by this, the previous city council, to the City of Tampa Code Enforcement Board. And now it's, you know, not just resume building, but doing things that I care about and gaining experience and meeting people from that. So in 2014, I filed, which Facebook memories came up and it said that six years ago today, I filed to run for city council for the district that I'm in. And...
How do you choose your district?
Huh?
How do you choose the district that you run for?
You have to live in the district, unless you go for a citywide seat, then you can live anywhere in the city of Tampa.
Okay.
So my district goes from Bush Boulevard and the interstate, Sulfur Springs, all the way down to Plant High School.
Oh wow.
So it's Seminole Heights, parts of Tampa Heights, West Tampa, West Shore, the airport, Raymond James, the malls, International Plaza, West Shore Plaza.
What a great district.
Beach Park, Culberth Isles, parts of Sunset Park. So you go from one end of the spectrum to the other.
Sure, yeah.
New to old, historic, you know, huge, it's wonderful. I mean, what a variety that I have the honor of representing. But I ran in that race in 14 to 15, so it was a one-year-plus campaign. I really wasn't raising much money, you know? I had an opponent that was raising money like crazy. I think ended up raising over 200 and something thousand or spent over, you know, it was a lot of money. And I think I had a total of $56,000 bucks. So I went into a runoff with 28 or 29% to my opponent's 46 or 47%. Again, the odds against me, and it was a grueling, like, three, four-week sprint to the runoff. And it was a very nasty campaign. And the night of the election, you know, I'm not going to get into like the whole story, but I ended up winning by 151 votes.
Oh my God.
So Dick Greco actually told me, in the living room of David Straz, who had just run for mayor last year, back in 2011, 2010, he looked at me, there was an event for Greco for mayor at the gentleman's house, and he goes, "You're going to know this when you win. When you win, everybody shows up to your party." And let me tell you what, I had the election night watch party in a historic cigar factory at Armenian Columbus. And everybody showed up to that party. Dick Greco walked in, David Straz walked in, Bob Enriquez was there, supporting me, you know, always, all these other politicians, other council members. It was great. And in classic Tampa fashion, what do you do when, you know, when you want to go celebrate? Everyone went to the Village Inn Pancake House on Dale Mavri and Kennedy. So I had pancakes and I went home. And I remember a friend of mine at my election night party goes, "Your life is different now." And, you know, and it is, and at the same time, it's really not. My friends are the same. I eat at the same places. I don't feel any more or less important, you know, I've...
You getting a lot of calls for help?
You get a lot.
I know I've pushed that button before.
No, but it's, but it's okay. That's what we're here for. And I enjoy, and I try to help. I can't do everything. You know, people think, "Oh, you're on the count." You could, you know, make it so, you know, what is it, Star Trek style, make it so. No, the mayor has a lot of authority, but I love what I do. So I ran for reelection. Last year, we had an election.
Is it a two-year term or a four-year term?
Four-year term. So I didn't, I was in the race for almost a year. I had no opponent until the last 45 minutes before qualifying and somebody jumped in. So, and I still, and I won, you know, again, with the help of a lot of people.
Sure.
I have a list of people to think, that I think about every day, and I appreciate them so much. I mean, I could read off a list, but I make sure to tell them, you know, "Thank you for allowing me this opportunity." Because, again, the odds were against me. I wasn't raising money. You know, I was asked the Sunday before the election in 2015, before I pulled off that narrow win, "What do you do if, you know, if you lose?" And people were already preparing for it. "What are you going to do?" And I said, "I hope to mentor and encourage other people, young people, to get involved in politics." So I got elected at 30 years old, the youngest since, I want to say, 1971. I'm not the youngest ever, but, you know, Mayor Greco, you know, he got sworn in at 30 years old as a council member and then sworn in as mayor at 34. So, you know, I'm on, I'm on par with the, at least the same age as the gentleman that first inspired me.
Sure.
And that means a lot, that I can take it back to the beginning of the story of, you know, "So how'd you get involved?" And here I am. So I have just under three and a half years left in this term. I'm term limited. I don't know what I want to do. I mean, I can step away from politics and go back into the private work and whatever. You know, life is short and... Step away from politics and go back into the private work and whatever, you know, life is short and I just, you know, I wanna be happy and. And 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 it's it's an honor every day to serve the people of the city.
What's your day-to-day look like? I mean, are you in an office? Are you driving around town, meeting with different people?
I'm here uh now. Um, I go to a board meeting, which could be three hours after this. Um, I'll have lunch briefly, you know, something microwavable from the freezer. And uh, at three o'clock, I have another event uh at Rocky Point. My district goes all the way out there to the Causeway. And then I have a board meeting at seven o'clock tonight. Um, every day is different, but it's usually go, go, go. And I love it, you know, I had uh, really nothing to do this last weekend and I didn't know what to do with myself, you know.
Yeah, I find that too, the idle hands, you know, um. I remember I ran into you at uh the bookstore over there, uh, the Barnes and Noble on Dale Mayberry and you were in dress clothes and it was relatively late. Cuz I remember the store was almost closing and you were coming from one event and still had one more event to go to around nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night and I was like, God. I don't have it.
Was that a Friday night?
It would have probably been if my wife and I were out.
From Ebor after two events, going to West Shore for another event.
Yeah.
And um, yeah, I just popped into Barnes and Noble just to see uh the magazine rack.
Yeah.
That's it, you know, in and out, you know. I I like going to bookstores. I mean, I know. You know, Barnes and Noble is a is a big chain and and I always, I try to buy books from from independent.
I wish there was more of them, you know, uh, the vinyl's got a resurgence. There's a bu- bunch of those popping up, but as far as bookstores. The only one I can think of is the one down there on uh, what is that Tampa Street, isn't it?
No, it's gone.
It's gone?
The old Tampa Book.
Right across from the French Place?
It's gone.
Oh, is it? I didn't know that was gone.
And that was, that was, I I would find books that I couldn't get on Amazon or eBay or they were cheaper than than everybody and I'd rather support. Last year maybe.
Oh, man.
But they had a gr- I mean, you'd go in there and I found stuff that I didn't even know existed. So.
My wife's a big ballet fan and I tell everybody she's got the biggest collection of ballet books probably than any.
Yeah.
Any theater, any bookstore, any library, cuz you know, you go anywhere, you can find two or three of them. She's got hundreds of them and she picked up so many. Rarities just walking in there, you know.
My mother loves ballet. Um, uh, I believe she she has pictures with or she, I know she met. Baryshnikov. He came to Tampa for something. He had a signing somewhere. And um, I believe she saw uh Rudolf Nureyev.
Yeah.
You know, big, big person in the sixties and seventies. Um, he, of course, uh, passed away. But I go, you you you've seen legends, you know, you think ballet, what is it, you know? That's not like a guy thing, that's not, you know.
I'll tell you what, man, it's.
But it's beautiful.
Sure.
It's beautiful. I I walked into a place the other day and I and I met a friend. And there was, there was, there were hardly anybody in this place and there was this beautiful classical music playing.
Mm-hmm.
And you just feel energized, you know, just, I love music. Music is a big part of my life. And um, you know, sitting, let's say you go to the Straz and 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 watch a performance, watch it live. There's nothing more beautiful. I remember um, going to see The Sound of Music.
Uh-huh.
You know, not ballet, something completely different and leaving there in tears because it was such a. Wonderful production. One thing is seeing the movie, another thing is seeing it live. So if you see a live ballet performance or watch the um, the Florida Orchestra. Um, it's it's a wonderful moving experience. I mean, if you want a peaceful night where you wanna feel re-energized and and. And whatnot, leave there feeling good, you know, feeling all the emotions, happy, sad, whatever. Classical music, ballet, you know, a live orchestra, whatever it is, so.
The other part of it too, I I was from about two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve, I was uh. Doing Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and I don't know if you've ever watched one of those classes, but the first thirty minutes. That you're doing all these exercises on the floor to warm yourself up. You're you're running around the studio, you do, you kinda push yourself across the floor, you do somersaults, all this stuff. And it's it's physically very taxing while at the same time, my wife was doing a lot of ballet classes and a couple of times I had the opportunity to go watch her classes. And I was watching the warm-up that they did before ballet and it was almost the exact same thing and I was like. You know, I think a lot of these tough guys from this class, if they came over to this ballet class, tried to do what they're doing, they would, you know, they would pass out halfway through. So it's, I mean, it's it's a, it's a sport as much as it's an art in in my view.
I mean.
I mean, from a physical perspective.
It's art, art, you know, ballet is art, music is art, poetry is art, good conversation is art, you know, I have an Eng- English degree. So what? You know, you read a lot, you write a lot. I read a lot of poetry. I read a lot of books. And um, there's a beauty in 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 language. There's a beauty and, you know, it's all around us and we have to see it and embrace it. Not just, you know, oh, art is painting.
Right.
You know, or photography. Art is is everywhere. So um, you just have to, you know, appreciate all that life has to offer because it's it's all around us.
Now, you said uh you traveled back to Italy. Uh, you've gone back there several times once?
I went twice last year. My grandmother still lives there in a little town in Sicily, about uh twenty-five hundred people or so, so imagine.
What's the town called?
Alessandria della Roca.
Okay.
So um, my father made sure to raise my sister and I, speaking Italian, so I'm fluent in Italian.
Are you really?
I'm fluent in Spanish. I study French on a daily basis, which. You know, if I if I flew to France, I could get around.
Sure.
To a certain degree. Um, German, not so much. I I flew through Frankfurt and I had a layover there when I went to Italy last year. And I was completely, I didn't wanna leave my hotel. I'm like, if I get stuck, you know, but enough people spoke English. But um, my grandmother lives in that town. My dad's two sisters live in Sicily. I have cousins in northern Italy in Bologna. Uh, I believe I still, I had a great uncle in Florence who passed away, my grandfather's brother.
Florence is my favorite. I love Florence.
It's, it's, I haven't been in so many years. I mean, generally I fly through Milan.
Uh-huh.
I'll spend time there and then fly into Palermo, Sicily, and then it's a two-and-a-half-hour car ride or bus ride to my grandmother's front door. Um, I have family in Switzerland. I have family in London. I have family, I have my cousin in uh in Venice. I talked to him yesterday. We meet, uh, our grandfather's on my mother's side, the one that, he went from Sicily to Cuba after World War Two.
Oh, wow.
So we we meet, uh, we've met a couple of times, you know, if I'm in Milan, he'll fly up, we'll have dinner. Um, it's just, you know, but but I embrace the culture, I embrace my roots, I embrace what my family taught me. But again, you know, uh, French is a language I've studied for several years.
Have you been to France?
I've been to Paris.
Okay.
But I haven't explored. I've always wanted to go to the south of France, uh, see the French Riviera. Um. You know, just like, just explore small town. Now that I can speak a little more, I mean, I can, I can read a lot.
Doors for you.
Yeah, it's, you know, and a lot of people speak English over there and they'll say, oh, the French look down on Americans. No, if you make an attempt to speak. I'm.
You show respect, they'll respect you.
I was treated completely different. You know, I would even ask them, you know, do you speak English? Because my French is, you know, not so great and they were very accommodating.
I found that too.
What did I do in Paris? You know, the first time I went, I had this layover in connecting to uh Italy and I went to a Perliché Cemetery. I'm into cemeteries and history and old buildings and who's there? Jim Morrison.
Oh, wow.
And uh, I said, I have to pay my respects to uh someone's music that I've loved since I was a teenager. And in that same cemetery is uh. Oscar Wilde.
Oh, wow.
And who's who's uh, who's uh Crypt or Mausoleum, it's a weird sculpture, was covered in lipstick.
Oh, really?
Now they have a a plastic barrier. Then there's Edith Piaf, you know, very famous uh, uh, female French singer. So I'm like, you know.
Yeah.
What, like, like my friend says, why do you go to the cemetery? They're not there. You know, their soul is not there. But you're, you know, you're whatever and and.
It's a touchstone to think about them, yeah.
Something. And 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 what's interesting with Jim Morrison is, I believe that cemetery is the number four most visited spot in Paris. And he has like twenty-four-hour security. There's a fence around his uh, his tomb because people have, there there was a bust on his grave of him, of of Morrison. And it was stolen and people, you know, ride all over the 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 grave marker and whatnot. But um, you know, it was nice, I mean.
He had a history here locally. He went through Saint Pete, uh.
Something like that. Jack Kerouac.
Jack Kerouac.
House there, which is still there. Um, and then you hear a lot of like Tampa local stories, you know, the Yankees. Um, you know, baseball players through the years, Babe Ruth hitting his longest homerun at the University of Tampa. Um.
John Prine lives over in Culport. That is just.
Yeah.
It's another, yeah.
I think the lead singer of ACDC lives uh in Sarasota.
Yeah.
Uh, what is it? Brian Johnson?
Yeah.
I can, I wanna say Bon Scott, but.
No, yeah.
He's the original from years ago. Um, a lot of celebrities come through Tampa that you don't expect. I was at the Oxford Exchange one day and I kept hearing. Uh, there's a big, there's a big movie star in here. There's a big movie star. And I'm looking for Tom Cruise, Brad Pitt, Leonardo DiCaprio, you know, Sandra Bullock, somebody. And I'm sitting at the the great center table that they have.
Long table.
The long table. And I noticed this woman, very, very fair-skinned with a big hat and two guys with her. And I'm there having coffee, playing on my phone like I usually do. And she walks out and she leaves. And I go, so who's the famous movie star? She goes, you were in front of her the whole time. And it was Tilda Swinton.
Oh, my gosh.
Who, I go, who who is Tilda Swinton? And I look and I go, ah, Curious Case of uh.
Benjamin Button.
Benjamin Button, you know, there she is and, you know, she's, there's a scene where they're in. In Russia, I think, together and they're, you know, they keep meeting in the middle of the night in this hotel and I go, here she is, the the woman that taught Benjamin Button how to. How to eat caviar and drink vodka and, you know, that that's how the scene was. And I liked, I love that movie. So I'm going, oh, okay. And then she was like the. The 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 queen or the the, is she something in Narnia or I I don't know. I'm clueless to.
She was, I guess, Doctor Strange and all these other movies, yeah. So, yeah, um. As far as Tampa goes, that I wanna talk with you a little bit about kind of what you see as big issues locally, things that you're facing now. Uh, the future growth, that sort of thing. I mean, i- is there any hot, hot button items that you're dealing with on a daily basis?
We've um, you know, you look at ten years ago to now, in the in the midst of the Great Recession. Layoffs, budget cuts, you know, the 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 whole global economy, the housing market, everything. And if you would have told me, look where we will be in less than ten years, uh, I wouldn't have believed it. I mean, I was walking. The River Walk the other day and there's armature works and there's Ulailey and Water Works and everything happening downtown and the Vinick Project and the.
Have you met him?
Vinick?
Yeah.
I've shaken his hand.
Yeah, okay.
Um, he speaks at an event I'm gonna be at this weekend. You know, but I've been close to him, but I've never really had conversations.
But so how how did he get in here? I mean, he's not from here.
No, I think he's from the Boston area.
Yeah.
Um, he wanted a hockey team. He bought the Lightning. Um, and then in that, you know, he's down here with all the development down in that area.
All the potential.
It's crazy. So in the in these last ten years, we've had over fifty-five thousand new people come to Tampa. You know, someone asks you the day, goes, oh, when you go to the grocery store, when you go to the, you know, the armature works, when you go to the mall, do you get stopped all the time? And I go. I don't recognize anybody.
Yeah.
There's so many new people. When you meet them and they'll say, oh, I've been here six months. I live in the apartments across the street. Oh, I got here in twenty sixteen. Oh, I got married and relocated here. Blah, 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 blah. But you don't really meet a lot of those Tampa natives. Now you go into West Tampa and to the, you know, the old older neighborhoods and whatnot. You go to the coffee shops, you know, they're all, they're all there. But um, we've had this, you know, I graduated USF at the end of oh-seven and all my friends that moved down here left. They all went back home except that one best friend who lives in Vero Beach. Uh, so at least he's within reasonable distance, but they said Tampa doesn't have what I need. Beyond jobs, it just, you know, it wasn't happening at the time. And um, now some of them have said, I gotta come back to Tampa to see what's going on. Or my favorite was, uh, my friend who visited. After being gone for years, said, I'm sorry that I left. I wanna take my kids to this park and walk my dog here and, but I like that. I'm sorry that I left. I said. You had to stick it out. I stuck it out, you know. I say, I'm born, raised and educated here. I never left to go to, I didn't go to Michigan to go to law school. I've always been here through the good and the bad. So things are good now, but me who waits for the other shoe to drop. Who, I was told the other day, you're scared to be happy. And I go, no, I overthink everything in preparation for whatever's coming at me.
That's a.
Uh, you know, I'm happy and then I, and then I'm I'm awake at night, I'm going, what can I overthink tonight?
Sure, yeah.
But, you know, things are good now. I don't know if there's another recession coming. I don't know if the housing market's gonna, I hear these things. Give it another two years, give it another year. Give it another six months. You know, now we could be going to war with another country. Whatever, which that drives the price of oil up, the price of gold up, things that aren't gonna affect us, but people will hold on to their money. If there's, if there's, you know, a market crash or or a drop or uh the government's shut down, people are more careful with how they spend. So Tampa had several issues. Um, you know, offer transportation was that sales tax referendum that passed. That is now, you know, up in the air because of litigation. Um, I I openly endorsed that and supported that. Why? Because it's an investment in this community of. Bringing uh, uh, you know, rail, alternative methods of transportation here, expanding our streetcar system. Uh, paving our roads, fixing our roads, building our sidewalks, things that we need. It's not, you know, we're building a baseball stadium, which that's not something that I I think. You know, tax dollars should go to. I think, you know, if you're gonna, you know, tax the public or raise the taxes, whatever, it should go to investments. Um, the school sales tax uh passed and that's ten years, that's half a percent, but that goes to. Schools that, you know, they need new air conditioning. They don't have air conditioning, whatever it is, you know, crumbling infrastructure. I I put it all in that. Um. We have people moving here, people investing here. The real estate market is hot. Uh, we've always get. Put on a list of, you know, we're either like a pet, you know, the number four pet-friendly city or great place to retire, great place to start a family or start a business. We have a lot going for us, but we have a lot of people that are houseless, homeless, that are out on the streets. That's always a problem. You know, why is it that?
Driving down Tampa Street, going home every day.
You know, I mean, on the national level, you know, why is it that we don't have, you know, healthcare for everyone? Why are people filing medical bankruptcy? Why are people still homeless? You know, when we're the greatest country in the world, why aren't veterans being treated as they should after they serve our our. Country so bravely? I mean, there's there's so many things, but on the Tampa level, um, you know, it's. Continue reinvesting in our neighborhoods, uh, reinvesting in our parks, trying to get people that are homeless, giving a, not a handout, a hand up, try to help them. Um, but overall, I mean, marketing the city and how the rest of the country sees us, we're doing well. I mean, a fifty. Five thousand plus growth in our population through the recession, through the good and the bad times. Uh, I give a lot of credit to um, former mayor Bob Buckhorn. Uh, they call him, you know, Tampa's best cheerleader. Uh, he he, you know, he worked very hard. He was very careful in his planning and uh, I think he had a successful eight-year run. Now we go into the administration of Mayor Jane Castor, who uh wants to continue building bridges. Um, she's, she, you know, her, the door is open, the line of communication is open. She's got a wonderful chief of staff. She surrounds herself with good people and she's doing a great job, even though, you know, it's been less than a year that she's been in office, but several successes. Um, we successfully passed, that was proposed by the administration, a three-billion-dollar was called the Pipes Program. To replace our aging stormwater and pipe uh system. Pipes that go back to the nineteen twenties, you know, you see. Water main breaks, road closures and whatnot. That's an investment for the future. In twenty-sixteen, um. Uh, I work with the administration and with the uh support of my colleagues, we passed a two-hundred-and-fifty-one-million-dollar. Stormwater assessment to fix the flooding throughout the city. So that's why there's a lot of construction in South Tampa. And it's not just South Tampa, it's a citywide. You know, ten to twelve-year master plan where we're alleviating our stormwater issues, flooding issues, but at the same time. When we talk about sea level rise and climate change, what are we doing? You know, we're making sure our infrastructure is is up to date, so. You know, in preparation for whatever could happen, you know, Tampa's not just a flood zone. You know, we're actually. And making the necessary investments in our infrastructure to make sure that we're prepared. Um, but we're taking the necessary steps, I think, and we're investing in in what's needed, you know. Uh, the ones and the needs, we're going with the needs of the community. And that's where we stand.
Well, I I just, uh, you know, moving into this neighborhood two years ago has been such a. Great experience for me because it's kind of illuminated a whole other part of Tampa that I never had much opportunity. Uh, to come to. I mean, I'd been to the Seminole Heights when they kind of had their Renaissance of restaurants there, but. Uh, the neighborhood is just very tight-knit, you know, I'm on all these different Facebook groups and everybody seems to know each other and. Heavily involved, you know, I talked to Justin Ricky across the street and he's very involved and Ray Roa. From Creative Loafing and I mean, they're such cheerleaders for this neighborhood and, you know, it seems like Tampa's growth is gonna be. North of Kennedy, you look at Julian uh Lane Park and all this stuff that's happening. It's just kind of amazing where it's headed.
You, you know, you mentioned two great people, Ray and 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 Justin, uh, Justin extremely involved, you know, um. And the people around him, uh, other people in the community with him. Um, you know, I got elected and one of my. My my first major vote was in June. I got elected a few months earlier and it was for TBX. And the widening of the interstate to put these express toll lanes, basically doubling the 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 width or the footprint of the existing interstate. The interstate goes right through Seminole Heights, right through West Tampa. And I was the only no vote. On that because I, you know, I believed in the neighborhoods. I didn't believe in, you know, keep widening roads to accommodate cars to do what? You know, you're not solving the problem. So in that, I met uh. So many wonderful people that are great friends today and they're, like you said, their passion. Seminole Heights, for example, in Tampa Heights, it's it's tight-knit, but it's safe. You know, you can walk through that neighborhood at night, walk in your dog, whatever, and you're gonna meet friendly faces. And you're gonna feel safe because you know you're you are safe and you're surrounded by good people, people that have invested so heavily in the neighborhood. You know, with 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 not just money, but with love and um, and sincere um compassion and wanting to. You know, lift lift it up and make it what it is. So a friend of mine, a high school friend, went to Las Vegas for years. Went to my uh dental school, came back, now he's back in the area. And after being gone for so long, we met after years and he goes. Where's Seminole Heights? And I'm I'm thinking to myself, this guy's been in Las Vegas on the other side of the country here. And he has heard about Seminole Heights. I go, well, let me, let me take you on a tour. Let me, you know, what do you wanna eat?
Yeah.
Because it's a, a, a district of culinary art. Uh, you know, people from Brooklyn, New York say. I've heard this, you know, you come down here and you eat things that you'd find up in New York. I wouldn't expect you to be in Tampa, Florida.
Yeah.
And I go, don't underestimate us. I mean, we're on the map more than you think and we have the diversity and the culture here that maybe you would not expect.
Cuisine, yeah.
A- a- and it's unbelievable. So I'm very proud to represent, you know, this wonderful district because so much is going on and, you know. The people we've mentioned and whatnot, you know, I'm glad to know them because they really care and they're, and and people like that are what lift. The people we've mentioned and whatnot, you know, I'm glad to know them because they really care and they're, and, and people like that are what lift this, you know, our city up.
Well, thank you so much, Guido, for coming in and talking to us. It's a pleasure. Hopefully you'll come back.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, you know, when events come up in the, in the area that we can talk about, but we appreciate having you in today.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
All right, take care.